We can all rise for a moment of silence. Mr. Barton, if you could lead us in the platte.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and with liberty and justice in common.
All right. Mr. Barton. All right, so let's now, uh... Mr. Barton, you can come on up. All right. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment section of the agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak, uh... Towards anything at this time? Three minutes for individual, five minutes per group. Please specify the group, state your name and address for the record. No one is on the sign-up sheet, so... Anybody would wish to speak? Okay, hearing none. We now close the public comment section of this agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, we have minutes for approval in a bunch of them. Can we get our approval after seven? So we have much from Mr. Barton, is there a second? All second. Second, Mr. Reed, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will do a vote by proclamation. Does anybody say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. The ref shows unanimous. Moving on to item number four, proclamation, May is Old Americans Month, P. 2023-02. Uh, we have a guest with us, Tish Blackwell. We are going to read this proclamation that we will present to you upon our completion. So, uh, do you have any few words before we say it?
Um, I just wanna...
If you could just come up and state your name real quick. You're with me? Oh, add that podium.
Hi, I'm Tish Blackwell. I'm with, um, the Jefferson Area Board for Aging and JAMA. And I just want to thank you all for outlining this proclamation for Old Americans Month and for all the support that you give to JAMA for the programs and services we offer to older adults.
Awesome. All right, maybe you could just stay there for a second. Uh, Mr. Barton. We get a motion to approve proclamation, P. 2023-02.
Am I reading this about the oldest? I don't know. All right, I am old. Thank you, though. Whereas Nelson County includes a growing number of older Americans, with 28.8% of the population, who contribute their time, wisdom, and experience to a community. And whereas communities benefit from people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds, have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And whereas the theme of Older Americans Month is aging unbound, recognize the importance of not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring and combating stereotypes, emphasizing many positive aspects of aging, inspiring old, older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. And whereas Nelson County recognizes the need to create a community that offers the services and support older adults may need in order to make choices about how they age. Now therefore, the Nelson County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May 2023 to be the Older Americans Month. The Nelson County Board of Supervisors urges every resident to celebrate our older Americans or citizens, help to create inclusive society, and accept the challenge of flexible thinking around aging.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? All second. Do we have a second, Mr. Reed? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes. All right. Uh, moving on to another special resolution. One of our own, Angela Rose, is going to be retiring. And, uh, we are very excited to have you here and recognize that service that you've had for the R community. If you don't mind coming up to the podium real quick while we read your resolution. Mr. Barton?
Yes, sir, thank you. First of all, I want to say that it has been an honor to serve the people on board and the last little bit. I appreciate everything that you do for the county. And here's our resolution. Resolution R. 2023-30. Nelson County Board of Supervisors, resolution recognizing the county service of Angela A. Rose. Whereas Mrs. Angela A. Rose, Director of the Department of Social Services, is retiring as of June 1st, 2023, after having tirelessly served the citizens of Nelson County for approximately 40 years. And whereas Mrs. Rose began her employment with the Nelson County Social Services Department in 1983 and was promoted to Director of the Department in 2014. And whereas during her tenure with the Nelson County Social Services Department, Mrs. Rose worked in all areas of family services, from working in child protective services, adult protective services, and adult services, as well as directing foster care and childcare programs. And whereas Mrs. Rose has dedicated her career to improving the lives of the families and children of Nelson County. And whereas Mrs. Rose is highly regarded as a consummate professional in her field, her public service has served to greatly enhance the Nelson County community and beyond, and she has been an esteemed colleague and friend. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Nelson County Board of Supervisors does hereby honor Mrs. Angela Rose with great appreciation for her dedicated and steadfast service to Nelson, to Nelson County and its citizens throughout her tenure. And be it further resolved that Mrs. Rose will be missed both personally and professionally, and the Board wishes her and her family continued health, happiness, and prosperity upon her well-served retirement.
Thank you. Please come forward. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second? All second. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes. Thank you, Angela.
All right, moving on to, uh, presentations. VDOT report. Or what? We have what?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Staff will take...
Oh, that's right, that's... I just saw a guy with a VDOT badge, so I wasn't sure.
Mr. Brown will be here to see you for the conference.
Got it, okay. Sounds good. That's later. That's later. Yeah, that's, that's the next one. Uh, do we need to take any calls for VDOT at this time? If we need to bring up or tell staff? Yep.
I do, but it's really complex.
Why don't you just tell Amanda after this and she'll send an email for you? Unless you want to talk about it.
It's what, what the board's question of is on Tilly Creek Road. There is, uh, uh, a place where water... They have a, um, something to bring the water across water. They cut out, um, uh, the area above it and it's, comes down and crossed the road into a person's property. And he is, that property owner, uh, showed me where it said that if, if, if water comes into a person's property, VDOT is responsible or for the damage done or, uh, needs to get agreement with the, uh, with the, with the property owner to do that. And, and this particular instance is, is it gonna be a difficult thing? Because it's, I, yeah, I don't... It's, it'll be expensive to fix it, but I think according to statutes and laws, VDOT is responsible for it. So I, I, I need to probably talk to, yeah, Brown.
Is that, is that all you have?
Yeah.
Mr. Harvey? Mr. Reed? Mr. Barton? How's it starting, Mr. Brown? Right there, my topics. All right, moving on to, uh, number seven, new and unfinished business. Gladstone Depot TAP grant agreement of agreement.
Hey, um, good afternoon. We have Mr. Jay Brown here from VDOT as well as Joey Natcher and some members of Friends of Gladstone Depot, um, to provide support and answer any other questions that I'm not able to answer. So this is something the Board has been comprised of ongoing since, uh, the, the grant funds were awarded by VDOT in 2021. The TAP funds were awarded in June of '22 and were notified of that award in September of 2022. We've been working with the Lindberg District, VDOT staff, Friends of Gladstone, and then VDOT Central Office in order to craft the draft agreement for acceptance of the fund. What you see here on the screen is Appendix A of that particular agreement. And it just outlines, um, the project financing, um, for the first phase. So as you can see in the box, we have transportation alternative funds of $733,708. And then, um, the remaining total project amount, um, is $2,461,151 with a 20% local match for this phase of $146,742. I'm trying to get to your part. Yep. Sorry. So the Appendix A is just the financial, um, aspect of the agreement. Other course of the agreement, we're in your packet. It outlines how the county and VDOT will, will work together on the project with VDOT providing the administration. And this chart was revised just this morning based on new information, um, provided by VDOT. We had gotten word that VDOT is considering a $2.5 million project cap for all TAP grant funded projects. And we found out that that cap is on the federal funds. So that helps our, um, our project situation. In the first box, this is where we are now. Project Phase One has been awarded. This first phase includes NEPA engineering design work, the new foundation, site preparation, development of architectural and structural plans, and placement of the tiered footings, um, for, um, placement of the depot. The current project estimate, which is a couple of years old now, is $3,194,859. There will be some escalation to that amount as, um, the construction industry climate has changed since this was developed. Our Phase One TAP allocation in total is $733,708. The local share of 20% is shown there at $146,742. And the federal funding is 80% at $586,966. We may also be able to use the value of the depot land of $85,000 for an in-kind local match. If that were the case, then we would be responsible for a cash match of $61,742. Again, um, VDOT rules are different, uh, when it comes to projects that are vertical in nature, vertical construction versus like linear, um, trail project. So the, um, applicant is asked to commit to the total, uh, project funding. So we have an unfunded project balance, um, of $2,161,151 at this phase. The 2023 TAP application grant round is upcoming and, um, we've been advised by Jay Brown of VDOT that there should be some significant funding available. You know, with the strong likelihood that we could get some additional funding in the next round. So Phase Two would be construction, uh, which would entail, um, depot building restoration and construction of the parking area. And then we would submit the current project estimate with the pre-application. And then as we work toward the final application, uh, we would refine that, that estimate at that point. So as I said, the possible funding cap is, uh, two and a half million in federal funds. Um, this box shows the TAP application schedule where pre-applications are open May 15th and they are due by June 30th. And then the full applications, if you, if you get through the pre-application screening, are due by October 2nd. So then in this phase, the Phase Two TAP allocation could be a maximum of $2,391,293. The local share of that phase would be $478,259. And the federal funding, um, amount would be $1,913,034. And this leaves an unfunded project balance of $69,858. So if we look at the project, uh, in whole, the total TAP project amount would be $3,125,000 with a required local match of $625,000 and federal funding of two and a half million. And again, the project, current project estimate is 3.1 million. And once we deduct the maximum federal funding of two and a half million and then also the local match of 20% at $625,000, we have a balance to be funded of $69,859. So the total potential local cost of this entire project, based on the current project estimate, um, would be $694,859. If we were to take into account the $85,000 in-kind contribution, that would be reduced to $609,859. And my understanding of the program is you have to get under construction within four years of your, um, TAP award allocation. And I think, is that from date of agreement signing?
No, it's from the date of the first allocation. So that's the clock.
So the clock has, yes, has been ticking. So I just wanted you to see the maximum, you know, kind of financial exposure at this point with all the information we currently have and the current project estimate, which, um, could escalate. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Candy?
Yeah, uh, because clearly, you know, it's, it's very important as you highlight, um, the change in costs that we're almost definitively going to see. Can you explain why that's something that can't be undertaken sooner or sooner later in terms of figuring out what those costs might be?
My understanding is, um, part of VDOT's work on the project would be to, um, work on getting revised estimate together, um, as part of the second TAP application. I don't know that it could be done any sooner than that.
Well, the reason being is that if the amount of the grant is dependent on what the original application was, I, I understand that. If there's an opportunity to revise it, um, before the second round, it would seem to be to our advantage to do that because it would increase our cost and the, the, the cost of it. Does, does the application allow for that?
Will you say anything? Mr. Brown, if you want to address that question?
And you are, Mr. Brown with...
Yes, my name is Jay Brown. I'm also with Lindberg District, just a different section than Mr. Robert Brown of Asser. So to answer your question, one of the things we're dealing with is until we have an agreement signed, we can't get the design team on board that's going to do the work that could help us develop the estimate. That's one of the pieces that we're looking at. We can look at the original estimate that's part of the original application and potentially look at what some of those escalated costs would be. But we're not going to get a refined dollar amount until we get the design team on board and have them build a good product. So that's one area of concern. But we do have time with the application process. So when we start the pre-app, uh, we can use the current costs that we have now, that we know we have. And that'll allow us time to develop the, for the final application, what that escalated cost should be. So as long as we can get your foot in the door of the pre-app process, that allows you the ability to submit that final application. And we just need to make sure we apply that so that the final application is. Does that, any other questions?
It's done, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions for, uh, the VDOT or listening here?
I understand that there, there are some risks here, but there is real potential. I think it potentially is not, uh, a strong word for VDOT to contribute more money. And there is, um, real potential for, um, other entities to contribute to the, uh, the project. So, you know, it, it could be substantially less than what was presented. And there is a risk of...
And there is, there is definitely risk. And that's, that's one thing with Candy when we, uh, leave this project that we have to understand that in the event that there is no finishing, that Candy is on the hook. So that's one thing that we just have to be cognizant of. And that's something that we put aboard in three, four years in the future to see. Now, it's three to four years to start. Completion can be...
Correct. And there, there's a little bit of wiggle room in there too, as long as we're making four projects.
Got it.
That's not a hard and fast deadline.
Understood.
There were supposed to be 100 constructions in four years of that initial application. But there is, it is good to know there is a financial risk associated with this. As Candy was mentioning earlier, with a depot project with a vertical construction, you're making commitments during that NEPA process, environmental commitments, historical preservation commitments, stakeholder commitments. FHWA does not view those commitments met until the completed final phase of the depot is done. So you're on the hook for that full dollar amount. And it has to be completed to meet those commitments. So, and that's why the agreement shows that unfunded portion of the second phase. Because we have to look at the projects as a whole, even the work time phases, to make it more manageable.
All right. Any other questions?
There are numerous potential benefits of this project. What is the risk?
All right. Uh, all you need is a motion and the affirmative. Do you have anything else Candy need to talk about?
Yes. Um, I did promise, um, Joey Natcher. I would mention that, um, without, without this grant funding, uh, it's, it's quite likely that the depot, um, would be demolished. I mean, that is a likelihood should the restoration and moving and the restoration of the depot not occur. CSX is gonna take it down. Would you have a resolution for your consideration that outlines everything you would be committing to, um, in accepting this grant agreement and also authorizing me to sign the grant agreement? So that's Resolution 2023-31. And it outlines your, uh, local, uh, match commitment as far, and also the commitment to the total project cost.
All right, we have a motion. Yes. Okay, so you improve R. 2023-31. Right. Okay. Motion, we have a second. All second. We have a second, any further discussion?
Yes, I just wanted to say that as long as I've been on the board, we really, outside of this project, haven't had a great opportunity to invest in, uh, Gladstone, the southern part of the county. And I think this is a, uh, this is certainly worth the risk and also, uh, something that we can do, you know, with, you know, being very clear on our commitment to see it through.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much. We will be bringing back another resolution endorsing, uh, the Board's endorsement of the application in June.
Moving on to authorization of public hearing on real property tax concession for veterans. So that's a public hearing?
This is authorization for a public hearing.
Authorization for a public hearing. All right, anything you need to add?
No, I just was gonna note that, um, during our budget work sessions, we discovered that we were offering, uh, this particular tax relief, but it was not included in our ordinance. And now we need to, uh, make sure it is. And, um, so the proposed addition is merit of state fed language. And the ordinance creates a new section, Division Four, exemptions for veterans and/or surviving spouses. Section 11-68 would provide for real property tax exemption for survivors, the surviving spouse of any member of the armed forces of the United States who was killed in action and also provide for application for that, um, particular relief. And then 11-70 would provide an exemption for disabled veterans and their surviving spouse. And also, um, the application for that relief, um, is provided for in Section 11-71. So we're proposing the public hearing being held on July 11th, uh, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. And you may approve this authorization, um, with Resolution 2023-32.
All right. Uh, we have motion for the authorizing of public hearing.
I move to the adopt Resolution R. 2023-32, Nelson County Board Supervisors, authorization for public hearing to amend the Code of Nelson County, Chapter 11, Taxation, Article 2, Real Property Tax.
All right, we have motion, we have a second. Second. Second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Barton? Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Juneteenth Celebration Committee funding request.
Good afternoon. I'm Eden Fethia, West District, Arrington, Virginia. Before I start in the Juneteenth, I would like to, on behalf of the Nelson County Department of Social Services, thank you for your resolution for Mrs. Andy Rose for her many years of service to the citizens of Nelson. Andy, we thank you and we salute you. And thank you very much. Representing the Nelson County Juneteenth Celebration Committee, I stand here today on behalf of the committee members who are a diverse group of citizens consisting of Elizabeth Knight, Emma Wardlaw, Susan Green, Dee Shakers, Stephanie Ross, John Edgar Dett, Karen Blackburn, Reverend Rodney Sandage, Larry Stoddard, Reverend James Rose, and yours truly, Eden Fethia. Last year, Nelson hosted its first Juneteenth celebration, which was a resounding success. His theme was commemorate, educate, and celebrate. It was an outstanding event of acknowledging the past with hope for the future. The Nelson community came together and shared and rejoiced together. The Nelson churches, individual citizens, and businesses financially supported last year's event. This year, the event will be on June 18th, 2023, I think each of you have a flag and all that, at the Nelson Heritage Center. And although the event is at the Nelson Heritage Center, the event is sponsored by a group of citizens who comprise the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. And the Board of the Nelson Heritage Center has been gracious enough to allow the committee to host the event there, but it is not a heritage centric event. The event will be entitled, Discovering Our Roots, and consists of art exhibits, vision of progress, portraits of dignity, dignity, style, and racial uplift from the Holsteiner collection done in collaboration with the University of Virginia. There will be photographs and stories from a local family. The history of Nelson County school integration will be on display. There will be kids' activities, picnics on the lawn, and desserts for sale. We are requesting the county to support the annual Juneteenth celebration this year with a $5,000 donation and new and budgeted deliberations considering regular lawn items for this amount, so the committee will not have to drain churches and commuter organizations and to, oh, in order to host such a valuable event. At this time, I'd hear if any questions you might have.
Any questions for Eden at this time? Thank you, ma'am. All right, one is pleasure, board.
You know, I just pledge allegiance to the United States of America, that everybody, all men are created equal, and, you know, and the July 4th Declaration, and so on. The end of slavery is incredibly important then to the United States of America. Without that, we could not be a leader in the world. And, and, and we need to commemorate that event. And we need to recognize that slavery is part of our heritage, but it is over now, and we need to celebrate that.
Reed? I attend last year's event, and the program was fabulous. The food's delicious, and I'm very much in support of it.
Any other further discussion? Very well, is there any motions?
I'm not much.
Okay. You move to allocate.
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars to the Heritage Center. The Juneteenth meeting. Juneteenth celebration. That, does that get distributed to the Heritage Center?
No, you don't.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Yes.
It's to the Juneteenth Celebration Committee.
Committee.
Yes, to the committee, it's a separate.
Oh, thank God. All right. Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on to the Fourth of July event. Moving on to the Fourth of July event proposal, we are going to be having that discussion at the front of our evening meeting. Stakeholders with the largest fire department are not here in the afternoon, they ask to talk about it then. Long and the short is discussing fireworks in Livingston, and hopefully bring it back for many people's memories of fireworks at Alliance Field, some context to that. So they gotta ask, and I think it's appropriate that we just move that to the evening, on the agenda, if anyone's all right with that. Great. Moving on to reports. County Administration Report, Candy.
As usual, I'll start off with an update on the comprehensive plan. The website's www.nelson2042.com. We have the last of our previously scheduled joint work sessions of the Board Supervisors and the Cleaning Commission on May 17th at 6:30 PM. It's in the old Board Supervisors room. And this will entail, entail review of draft chapters for danger, land use, and transportation. As a lot of you know, we had a little bit of a glitch with our real estate tax bills. The glitch was with the tax bill printing, vendors programming. The 2023 real estate tax bills that are normally paid by lenders were inadvertently mailed out to taxpayers. So citizens that receive their 2023 real estate tax bill, which is typically paid by their lender, should disregard this bill and not pay it. The Nelson 151 corridor study is progressing. The first of the two public engagement sessions was held on April 18th.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Let's say, an elderly person gets his bill and always wants to pay, you know, and pays. Is there a way that this will be caught and the money returned to that person?
I believe if it's paid in duplicate, yes, it would be caught by the treasurer's office, and then a refund could be issued.
Historically, in the event you have escrowed your payments for whatever lender, let's just say it's like Wells Fargo or Truist, whatever is in excess does not roll over. The banks always usually distribute that directly to you. So whether it's said person paid or the bank paid, usually the bank is the one who finds out that the escrow was overdue, they mail a rebate check back. Typically, that's what they're saying.
It would get resolved.
That's okay.
Okay, so the 151 corridor study, we have the first of two public engagement sessions on April 18th at RBCC. I was well attended, and the attendees have the opportunity to review, VDOT provided study data, and also participate in the question and answer session with VDOT staff and the project consultant. We'll have a second session, and that date and time and location needs to be determined. A little bit on the status of the FY23 budget, which is the current fiscal year, which will end June 30th. Most of our expenditures are tracking as expected, with a few exceptions that are higher than budgeted. These are in the county attorney fees, gas, oil increase lines, Children's Services Act or CSA, and juvenile detention services. These increased costs will be covered by remaining contingency funds and greater than expected realized local revenues if needed. In the following categories, we have these greater than expected realized revenues. Meals and lodging tax, court fines and forfeitures, and interest on investments. Greater CSA expenses will be offset by greater revenue from the state providing for their percentage share of those expenditures. Real estate and personal property taxes are expected to heterozy budgeted estimates primarily due to the receipt of higher than anticipated taxes paid for prior years. Other local revenues in total are currently tracking approximately 8.4% ahead of the budget estimates. The FY24 budget, as you know, the board will conduct this public hearing on the proposed FY24 budget for all funds of the evening session. There must be at least seven days lapse between the public hearing and budget adoption. There's been no additional work by the state on the FY24 state budget since the passage of the skinny budget, which makes required deposits to the state's revenue stabilization fund, provide some surplus revenue from the prior fiscal year to capital projects and for junior retirement system. It also makes some technical updates to K through 12 funding and provides 16.8 million toward fixing the 201 million math error by the State Department of Education. We are making progress with implementing the Nelson County Adult Drug Court pursuant to Virginia State Code 18.2 dash 254.1. Drug court advisory committee and drug court team has been established. While not an official public body, subject to the Freedom of Information Act, the advisory committee is working to create its bylaws and adopt the Drug Court Operations Manual. An employment offer has been made for the drug court coordinator position, and if there's an anticipated, the court will be going to stop it in early June. Drug court will be conducted weekly on Tuesdays from noon to 1:00 PM in the circus court. On the opioid abatement authority application, the regional application to the state opioid abatement authority that would benefit the member of the counties of Region 10, including Nelson, Charlottesville, Albemarle, Savannah, Greene, and Louisa, was submitted by Albemarle County to the OAA by the May 5th deadline. All six member localities certified by Region 10 agree to be part of the cooperative residence. The proposal would use these grant funds to expand Region 10 crisis response services, C-Tax services, and community outreach services that are currently available to its members. The decision on this grant award is anticipated sometime prior to July 1st. At the April 28th Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development Meeting, that board, which I'm a part of, voted to allow a resource development group to conduct fundraising feasibility study on behalf of the CDP. This is to gauge capacity for new private sector investments that could be raised from a formal fundraising campaign. Additionally, results of a study by UBA's Weldon Freeper Center on the economic impact of the defense industry in the study region of Albemarle, Charlottesville, and Greene were shared, and the information should help CDP better showcase defense as one of the region's very important target industries. The region's defense industry as studied was comprised of Romana Station, which houses the National Ground Intelligence Center, the Defense Intelligence Agency, and the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, the Judge Advocate General's Legal Center and School, military veterans, Department of Defense contracts, University of Virginia, and reserves and National Guard, and other sources. Full study results are available on request. There was an excerpt from the executive summary that detailed the economic impact results, which indicate that the defense industry directly accounts for 33,972 jobs, 421 million in labor income, 501 million in value added, and 642 million in output. And then, once you include the indirect and induced impacts stemming from this activity, the total regional economic impact is 7,247 jobs, 618 million in labor income, 831 million in value added, and 1.2 billion in output. And to give you an idea, this represents 5.9% of the Charlottesville region's employment, 7.5% of their labor income, 6.2% of value added, and 5.7% of total output. In terms of the regional library agreement review, there's really nothing much to add there, hasn't been much change. We received the director's analysis of the out-of-area fees and their impacts to the number of localities, but any further discussion has been delayed by work on member locality's budgets. So we should be getting back to that shortly. I don't have any news report on the new office building, the change from the April report. We're still waiting for the industrial analysis work to be done and reported back to the county by PMA. As soon as we have that, we'll forward that on to the board. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Candy on the office building? What did we, how did we end with the other facility we considered? Did we just walk away from that? Were you having someone else look at that possibility?
That's my understanding that it wasn't going to be suitable for this particular purpose.
I had correspondence with Mr. Blunt, our legislative guy, and he'd indicated that the budget is most likely, the state budget is most likely to be completed in the last week of June. So, there is a reality that this board needs to be cognizant of, is that if we pass our budget, there is a very real reality that we're basing it off of numbers that could be inaccurate from the state, which we're making our assumptions off of the House budget, rightly.
That's, well, county is not, but the school division is.
School division.
And that was a part of our larger budget.
So, we do need to be cognizant of what that means in the event we then have to change posture, whether it's more money or less money, just depends what the state's going to do. So that does put us in a slight peril. We just need to be aware of it. Right, Candy?
Yes, thank you.
Other than that, any other questions for Candy? Thank you, Candy. Let's move on to board reports. Mr. Barton?
I'm with the other board, it's not me, it's Blunt, so.
All right. Mr. Hardy?
Reed? Got one significant report from the Nelson County Service Authority. Nelson County Service Authority is going to be holding a public hearing next Thursday morning at 8:30 at the Service Authority office. The proposed rate increase is 10% to water and 15% to sewer. That increase is required to be able to meet the Virginia Resources Authority threshold for future financing, and because the Service Authority is able to borrow money for, and qualify for grants from state agencies based on the revenue, guaranteed revenue that they have from their, from their customers. So, that is, that is something that, that the Service Authority has proposed. Anybody want to come to the public hearing and voice your support or not, just come. And, and we're moving forward on a long-term upgrade to the sewer line in Livingston. So that's something that this increase will make more possible, because we'll be able to get some support for it. So, that's my board.
All right.
This part, Emergency Services Council, that's on the 18th. As you all remember, a few years ago, we supported the purchase of an extractor, the industrial washing machine for the turnout year for firefighters, and it was placed in a neutral location at the MMS building down here, EMS building. And now they're looking at possible options of removing that, because most of the firefighters would want to use it, want to use it in the evening, when the EMS crew goes to bed about nine o'clock, where this is located, they're concerned about waking them up, and they're using it. So, now they're looking at other locations. Candy, has anyone reached out to you all about possible county facilities that could house the extractor?
Yes, we've had a couple of conversations, brief ones, but I think they may be able to work out, leaving the extractor where it is, and just kind of come to some regular terms of agreement for use in terms of what kinds are, it should be available and things like that, so they won't be disturbing the EMS folks that are expressing. I think they can work it out in a fiber means.
Yeah, I hope that it can work out, because I know accommodations were made to house the extractor in that location, again, and now I just go there. I'm glad we're able to probably work that out. There was also some question about exactly what the county does reimburse of each department for, and what they don't, and what's eligible. Is there a list of things that are eligible for them to be reimbursed, and if so, can we provide it to the chiefs or to the head of EMS?
So, in terms of like their annual budget request?
Yes.
So that, that's developed by the president of the EMS council, Dana Johnson, who should put together. And my understanding is, is a compilation of all of the agency's expenditures for the previous fiscal year. So, in FY24, their allocation will be based on their expenditures from FY23, and then they get a base amount from the county, depending on whether or not they're a standalone fire or EMS agency, or a combined agency. If they're combined, they get a little more of the base allocation.
I don't think that was the question they were asking. They were asking what qualifies to be included in that list of expenditures, you know? What can they get reimbursed for, and what items that they spend, you know, are not eligible for them to include? I think that's the question they had.
Okay. I'm not aware that there's any criteria that the county has for reimbursing. It's mostly their operational costs. I mean, if you look at their, the budget request submitted, it gives you details on utilities and any kind of operational costs that they have. Phones, whatever they have, that's what they submit, and that's what you all consider for reimbursement.
Okay. And the last, I have to say, this conversation was a little low in my head, but you probably can pick up the helicopter out of Chesterfield. Are you familiar with that situation where we have access to, I wrote in heart, A-J-R-P, but it's a helicopter that is kind of on standby whenever we need. They can come in and land if there's an extraction needed, say, for example, Crabtree Falls, they can be here and pretty quick with the helicopter, get somebody out of there.
I don't know a lot about it. I know they came and did a demonstration with the helicopter here in the county that all the EMS agencies were invited to. I think John Atkins attended. They're able to lift 15, 13 or 15 people out in the basket at once, I believe.
Yeah.
And yes, my understanding is they are at our disposal if needed.
Yeah. That was pretty impressive. They could hear it real quick. That's all I have.
All right. PC actually had a meeting this morning talking about affordable housing in the region. You're looking at potentially doing another, for those of you who already remember, remember when we did that housing study showing what the status was? what status was each county, showed the affordability. We're looking at potentially doing that again, just to see where we're at with it after COVID. So the PDC Regional Housing Partnership is going to be engaging. Some consultants on that. So we'll get some new data to see where we're at as a county. As every day goes by, you know, Nelson County becomes a less affordable place to live. This is impacting a lot of our populations, especially in our poor areas. You know, there's a lot of scenarios where people who bought homes pre-2017 would have to pay about 50% more than what they originally did in order to infiltrate the exact same home in the exact same area. Recently, I was talking to some agents about just homes that make it sold off market and seeing homes in shipping, a 2,000 square foot, very standard home, 712 roof pitch, you know, good starter, good retiree home, sold for close to $380,000 without even hitting the market. And so when we talk about that perspective and what that means to our community, where our blue collar community and our lower income, as well as our aging demographics, if they were to try to infiltrate the market that we have today, their income would be a third of what's needed to even get remotely close to infiltrating below it. So, you know, as we look at homes and the inventory of our community, watching it get, you know, consumed up by a lot of, not just, you know, maybe people looking to get monetary benefit, but just people in the urban brain of Charlottesville. With the high-speed internet aspect, you're seeing even more housing inventory get sopped up. And, you know, this is becoming more a real issue. And if you engage at any point with some of our staff and with the building code office, and you ask what kind of homes are getting built, they'll tell you they got two commas and seven digits. So not a lot of low-end housing being built or even starter homes. We need to be very cognizant of this. Though it doesn't feel like much of an issue today, this is going to speak to a very major issue as it relates to our future workforce in the next 10 years. Just puts it in perspective, if you took a deputy's wage and a teacher's wage combined, they couldn't afford the cheapest home on the market today in Nelson County. So it's a sad reality. That's my report. That's the real deal. So beyond that, I do not have anything else to report. We do have a list, let's go on to appointments. We have a whole bunch of folks who need to get onto the Ag Orstel District Advisory Committee. Amanda, is there anything we need to know? Or is this something that Ernie could read every single one of these people when we make the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to clarify, I think Mr. Reed was reporting on a public hearing for the Service Authority reins. I believe that has been changed to June 15th at 8:30 AM due to a publishing issue of the public hearing that is. I just wanted to clarify.
Good point.
Thank you.
I was going to show up.
I should.
Eight thirty, eight thirty AM on June 15th at the Service Authority building.
Why y'all do that in the morning?
Public hearing at 8:00 AM?
Is that, what day is that?
Thursday.
You go rate as rates 15%, have a public hearing at 8:00 AM?
Seems to be, we're on the board, but decided to change the time for meeting time.
I know. Same mind as Dave. And not approval of that. Appointments.
So yes, Ag Orstel, all of the folks currently serving, wish to continue to serve. Of course, Commissioner Agnew is appointed as staff person. Our board members serving on the Ag Orstel, so it's up to you or if anybody else wishes to serve, I leave that part to you. Otherwise, everything is out of the table.
All right. Ernie, you want to just go down that list and read appointments?
I'm not finding any listening. Hey, go ahead. The only thing that I would bring up is that Mr. Barton's term is up as the staff representative. I'm currently a producer on the list as citizen. If there's no other board member who wishes to be on that board, I could move to the staff position and have an open spot for producers, which might, you know, which is one suggestion, one hospital. But I do wish to serve in one of those capacities.
Mr. Barton, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
He's kicking you off. All right. Y'all have any issues with that? All right, so that will be one producer, when you read that list, spot open that Amanda needs to advertise for.
Okay, then I move to reappoint Andy Bright, Billy Newman, Susan McSwain, Joyce Burton, Charlotte Ray, and Mary Cunningham and our Commissioner. As the members to the Ag Orstel District Advisory Committee.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Barton.
Yes.
Mr. Farren.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Yes. All right, and it looks like we got some appointments coming up.
Yes, so several coming up. EBA, we have an expired term that Mr. Plomers was appointed to serve on. And then John Frideric's term serving. Both of those expire June 30th. Both have indicated their interest in serving, but we still need to advertise all of those. They'll be advertised this week. They are on the county website. Criminal Justice Board, Mr. Plom, he does not wish to serve again. He served six terms. He's hopeful we can find someone else, but he is willing to continue if needed. Nelson County Library Advisory Committee, Jane Strauss is Central District Representative. So I'm waiting to hear back from her on her interest, but again, advertising that position. Social Services Board for South District, Sadi Van Kova, was filling in an expired term. And I'm waiting to hear back from Kurt as well. And then on job of board directors, Dana Quillen, just completed first term and indicated interest in serving again. So we have advertised, but we do have interest in serving again.
Okay, great.
We'll bring those back to the floor.
Sounds wonderful. Correspondence.
I have a question. Do we have to wait until you?
Because I've been in touch with Dana and sort of on the job of board with her. I don't know if she intends to, we have to wait until that can be announced to be able to make that appointment.
I think it's been typically the practice that we always advertise the expiring terms. Certainly take, you know, interest.
Anything else? Correspondence, Mr. Barton? Three, or Harvey? That's all. Mr. Reed, Mr. Farren.
No.
The only correspondence I got was related to TOT stuff, but we'll hear about that more in a secret. Moving on to directives, Mr. Barton. Mr. Barton. Mr. Reed.
No.
Mr. Farren. I direct that I wish Mr. Barton a happy birthday.
And I wish Jesse Webb a happy birthday. Share the same birthday with you.
Anyways, if there is nothing else, Candy, you have anything else before we continue to 7:00?
No, sir.
All right, let's get a motion to continue the meeting at 7:00. So move motion. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Harvey. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Y'all, 7:00.